We've got one minute according to my phone. Nope, just turned to 5:30. Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brooke Clancy Superintendent of Schools for the NOS at Public Schools. I'm going to be opening this meeting because this is the annual reorganization meeting for the Wellfleet Elementary School Committee. This meeting will take place fully remotely pursuant to the law signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, and act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which includes an extension until July 15th, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive orders of spending certain provisions of the open meeting law. So this is obviously the Wellfleet Elementary School Committee meeting. The meeting ID is 868-954-4734, and the passcode is 564767. At this point in time, this is their reorganization component of the meeting, and so with that in mind, I'd like to take nominations, please, for chairman of the Wellfleet Elementary School Committee. Any nominations? Jill?
I nominate Martha.
Thank you. The nominee, Martha Gordon, Laura, and everybody else seconded.
Everybody.
So with that said, though, Martha, we have to ask you, will you accept the nomination?
Of course.
With that, then, we'll take a vote for this particular position. So we would ask Jill Platten.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura Bagetti.
Yes.
Joan Zoukis?
Yes.
Liberty Schlipp?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Martha. I turn this back over to you.
Thank you very much. And our next office is for vice chair. And are there any nominations for vice chair? And if not, I would like to nominate Laura Bagetti.
Second.
That was fast. Oh, I see. Everybody is seconding us.
An enthusiastic group. I think many people are very relieved right now. I'm just saying.
No, you're just getting started. You need more time.
Okay, good. Laura, are you fine with that? Great, thank you. And I see a show of hands, please. How many people would like Laura Bagetti?
Laura would like Laura.
Okay, oh, great. Good. Okay, that's good. And we don't do anything about secretary, right? We, okay, so we can skip hot, and warrant authorizer. That's the person who signs the warrants as they come in during personnel spending. And we, I guess, somebody has to nominate somebody to do that. Don't be shy.
Can you, can you say what that involves?
It's, it's, um, it's, it's an e-signing thing. Back in the day, we used to all by paper, when we'd come to meetings, sign every single warrant that came in during, during the month. Now we are able to designate somebody to sign the warrants, and fortunately, they can be done by e-signing, which makes it much easier for the person to do. And they come in sometimes two or three times a month, but never really more than that. I can see. No one wants to nominate anyone.
Is it usually the chair, Martha? What? Is it usually the chair? I mean, is that normally a?
I know, it's often the chair. It has been for us. Betsy did it, and I, as her vice chair, was the alternate. But it doesn't have to be the chair. It's, it's perfectly fine if somebody else would like to do it. You know what I think? Can I just say, if somebody would like that job, speak out?
I, I'm happy to do that. It sounds simple. I'm online all the time, so.
Okay, okay, great. That's wonderful. So that's, that's Liberty and warrant.
Second.
Okay. Would you be the alternate? I've given up on the voting here. I hope I don't get arrested.
I'll be the alternate. That's great.
Okay, and for subcommittees, at this point, what usually happens is if you're already sitting on a subcommittee and you want to keep it, let us know. And if you don't, let us know. And if somebody else would like it, you know, I'm, then people can work that out as well. And the first committee is the Policy Committee. And I presently, presently am sitting on it. I am happy to continue, and I'm just about as happy, maybe even a little happier to have somebody else do it, but I'm happy to continue. So if anybody else would like to sit on that committee, it meets once a month. Anne Crozier is currently our chair, and she is amazing. She never lets the meeting go for more than an hour. But it's late in the afternoon. I think it is like 4:30 the first Monday of the month, something like that. It's very regular. And there is a little homework.
I nominate you.
Okay, I will do it.
Okay, second. Thank you, Martha.
I will get back, back at you, Joan, just so you know. And the central office budget Joan was sitting on that, and we, I agreed, if she doesn't want to do it, I will do it. But if somebody else would like to do it, it's a, it's a committee that really does only meet during the budget season, you know, leading up to the budget season.
And I'd be happy to continue. I mean, it's, it's a short-term thing, so. I don't want to overload you, Martha. Unless someone other than Martha would like it. Why don't I just continue with it?
Thank you.
And I nominate Joan. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
It's like the dead of.
I can't.
The next committee is negotiations, and almost always, it is only, it's, it's a time thing as well. It's during negotiation years and negotiation time that it's very, very busy, and the rest of the time, only if there's an MOU that comes up, then we have to sit on it. I am on it. I'm new to it. And I haven't gone through a negotiation experience except for the MOUs. If anybody would like to be on that, I'm happy to hand it over. I would love to continue on it.
But some of us can't be on it.
That's true. Yeah, that's true.
Laura can't be. A bunch of us, right? If you have children in the schools, you can't be on it, right?
I don't think that's true. I think if your child teaches in the school.
Oh.
Laura's kids are a little younger. They're not teaching yet.
They're not teaching yet, okay. I second you being on it. I first didn't second it.
Would anybody like?
No, I second you, Martha. I don't want to do it.
All right, transportation. And that might be, that, we might be coming up for another contract. I don't remember. And Laura, were you on that?
I think I was on it, and I've never, ever been contacted. I'd be happy to stay on it.
Okay. Not taxing. I'm warning you, that happened to me, too. I really had very little to do until we had to put together a new contract, so it could happen.
Okay.
Strategic planning. I am happy to stay on that. I feel kind of married to the strategic plan. I will probably never sit on another strategic planning workforce again, but I loved it while I was doing it, so I can. And behavioral health task force. Joan, are you happy to stay on that?
Behavioral health, yes, please.
Okay. And Jill, are you happy with the K-Cod Collaborative?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Liberty, PTA?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. And school council, Joan?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then Union 54. Union 54 members.
I'm happy to stay on it.
Okay. So I have to do it. And Jill and Laura. And obviously Liberty and Joan, you will be alternates. Okay, that means if one of us can't be at the meeting or can't vote, it's very exciting, then you get your chance to vote.
The power of it all. Okay.
Okay, any, any additions, corrections, questions? Later on, we will be talking about the liaison to the Maurice Campground project, but Ryan is here to speak about it. Before we move on to Ryan, I would like to see if there are any citizens who would like to speak. Okay, seeing none. Ryan, are you here? Yes, you are. Hi.
Howdy. So as, as you may be aware, the town has reached a purchase and sale agreement with the Gautier brothers for the property at 80 State Highway, now as Maurice's campground. It is a 21-acre parcel, and we are primarily looking at it for housing. As part of the, the, the purchase and sale agreement, we've agreed to continue to run the campground portion of it for a period of six years. And realistically, with the timeframe it takes for municipalities to move housing projects, that kind of aligns with when we would be able to start doing construction there anyways. I don't know. I just wanted to know if there are any questions or concerns that I might be able to address tonight. Martha, you're muted. Sorry.
Still muted.
Joan?
Oh, thank you. Could you just talk about the potential breadth of housing that could be there?
Um, I mean, that remains to be determined. We'll form a planning committee after, if it's approved by town meeting, we'll form a planning committee, then they would be responsible for developing a plan. I don't know. I mean, we, for instance, 95 Lawrence Road, that's 46 units. It's six acres of land there. And a good portion of that land is kind of unbuildable due to the slope. And that was also limited by, you know, the, the, at the time, we didn't want, the, it was decided not to try to apply for a groundwater discharge permit, which we subsequently have decided to apply for at that location. So with 20 acres, you know, you can see, I, I don't know how many units or what's the right mix. But, you know, it allows, it's a great opportunity to, to increase the number of houses or housing that's available to residents.
That would be determined after multiple forums where residents of Wellfleet would have their input?
Yes. So it'd be a planning committee where hopefully, I mean, we've discussed modeling it after the committees that Eastham's been running for, for their, for the properties they've purchased, which included a very robust citizen outreach program. And that is something that's really to be admired in those, in those efforts that you stand.
Say what assistant outreach is?
Um, I mean, it varies. They, they've, they held a number of sessions with the public. I know that they, their initial responses were, they were missing certain age demographics, and they had to go back and reevaluate their entire approach to incorporate those age demographics in their responses. It was primarily the younger people who were not responding. You know, and that's over, that was a multi-year process, so. I don't know if that helps.
Have you taken the temperature of the town so far? Like, you have a sense that, that, that people are supportive of this?
I hope they're supportive of it. We'll, we'll find out, you know? So I can't speak for the citizens, you know? Our, our, our job is to make the proposal and, and explain why we think it's a, a good, would be a good purchase for the town of Wellfleet, and if the citizens choose to disagree with us, you know, they can, so.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments for Ryan? He has another meeting to go to this evening, which makes it.
No question, Ryan. I just want to comment that I think it's a fantastic idea, and I'm so glad you guys are looking into all these possibilities for housing. I'm really excited about it, and I, I would say, from what I've heard, people are into it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I have been to two meetings so far. One was the first organizational meeting about, almost, well, a week and a half ago. And Ryan was incredibly well organized, so immediately we fell into small work groups. And people, from what I understand, I know that the group that I started with is certainly moving ahead very, very quickly, and that's the communications group. And we can talk more about that because one of the things we do want to do is have somebody from this group be part of that group. So Joan has expressed some interest. I'm going to sort of hang around on the periphery, but I'm trying not to go to too many more meetings. So it, it's very, very exciting, and there's, what was interesting to me at that very first meeting was the people from all, all walks of Wellfleet, I guess is what I could say, were there. You know, there was a lot of excitement, a lot of great ideas, and all age groups were represented. All of that was, was, and from all walks of life, it was really, it's a good, good working group, and I really think they're, they're doing due diligence, so.
Please.
And I'm sure whoever sits on this committee will keep the rest of us posted as well. Okay. And no other questions or comments, Ryan? Thank you very, they're, oh, oh, you're just waving, Jill?
No, I just want to thank you, Ryan, the, for all your hard work and, you know, another supporter about what you're doing.
Yeah, well, thank you for your time this evening. So thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. I hope you get dinner. Okay, then, the next thing that is on here is the superintendent evaluation representative, but I think before we do that, we should discuss very quickly. Joan is happy. I believe, Joan, you're still happy to be part of that effort?
Very happy.
Okay, is there anybody else? All right, I think the meetings would be problematic for Laura and Liberty. Some of them tend to take place at noon, you know, that kind of thing, but we'll keep you informed on it for sure. Thank you, Joan.
Awesome.
And the other thing that we need to do today, when we had that meeting with Jim Hardy, it was clear, it was a wonderful, wonderful workshop, but a lot of us really felt that we needed to step back and, and rethink the evaluation process, the superintendent reevaluation process. And to that end, I, we agreed that we would ask one person from each school committee to be part of a small committee to work on the process, to tweak our process, to make changes in it, to make it more reasonable for our school system and for our school committees. So I'm wondering if there's anybody who would like to be on that committee. I have no idea what, what it will entail in terms of time. Okay, um, I can do.
Try. I just, you know, I don't, I don't, I mean, I could certainly try. I can't, you know, it kind of depends on when it meets, but I'd be happy to try.
Can, can we?
That's what I was gonna say, too. The same thing. I just don't know if I can do it or not.
All right, I haven't. I agree, I agree. I am okay to do it, but if either of you would like to do it, I'd love to give you that opportunity. So what I think is, you know, at first I thought, well, it really should be somebody who's had some experience doing the evaluation in the past, and then I thought, well, it might also be good to have somebody with a completely fresh mind at it. So I think there are benefits to both. So what can happen? Can I temporarily say I will do it, and then when we find out what the schedule is like, can I turn it over to someone if someone has time?
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, all right. So for now, I'll do it. If it turns out the first meeting is on a, you know, Saturday, or, you know, at a time when you're, you know, in the evenings when you're not working, we can certainly go with that. Okay. Because I, I'm perfectly delighted to have one of you do it. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the summer schedule. The chairs match. I was the whiny child. The chairs met on Saturday morning because I wanted to, I was really hoping we'd meet before our meeting. We apparently are the first school committee meeting in the cycle, and we wanted to iron out what was going to be happening with our summer schedules. And it felt to me that we're working towards consistency. And in so doing, we had a good discussion about what the schools wanted to do, what the school committees wanted to do in terms of summer schedule. And I think what can happen in the summer is all over the map. It can be, yes, you're going to meet in July, and yes, you're going to meet in August, or no, you're not going to meet in July, but you are going to meet in August, or vice versa, or you're not going to meet at all in the summer. Just take the summer off. And what happened when we discussed all of the policies is that people seemed to be in pretty strong agreement that we would not meet in July, and we would have August as needed. So if we do need to have a meeting in August of the Wellfleet School Committee, and I assume the same would carry through for the joint school committee meetings. If we had to meet, we would. If there's something that absolutely is pressing and we need to figure it out before school starts, and, you know, given the situation with COVID, that could, that's, that's a reality, you know, it's, it's, so there's nothing set right now in terms of meetings, and if we do have to meet, we'll just make sure that everybody is online. So, and all of the elementary school committees are, are going with that. At some other point, at a later date, maybe at our June meeting, we could talk about the possibility of something like a summer retreat. Not this summer. I don't think we would be able to get it, get it going, but something like that for either all of the elementary school committees, or the joint committee, or just the five of us in the summer. But that's something we can all discuss, think about. All right, and now we're at G, which is administrators' reports, and I have this other computer that keeps going by. Okay, so I will start with the chair's report. Good evening and welcome to you all. Seems like we were just in the middle of winter, and here we are at our May school committee meeting. Time flies when you're having fun. May is the time for reorganization, for greeting and welcoming new committee members, and for coming up for a plan for summer meetings, and we've done almost all of that, but we have not yet welcomed officially our newest newly-elected school committee member, Joan Zoukis. She campaigned well. She campaigned hard, and here she is. We're delighted to have her.
It was a nail-biter.
No. We almost had to have a recount.
Thank you.
The amazing staff of Wellfleet Elementary School has reached the last act of an incredibly, an incredible year. In spite of COVID upticks and illnesses, substitute and bus driver shortages, this amazing group of people, led by the fearless Principal Rodman, has made it to the home stretch. We could not be more impressed with the dedication and professionalism displayed by this team of all-stars. As changes to protocols have been needed, the communication that has been shared with the school committee, community through Principal Rodman and Nurse Croson has been clear and articulate. We're so grateful for the decision-making process and the transparency, and we are so thankful to our staff and faculty. If you haven't had a chance to view the amazing Wellfleet Elementary School Spring Art Show, I recommend it highly. I laughed. I cried. I was in awe. The creativity of the students and the quality of the work highlight the artistic talent and teaching skills of Mrs. Gallagher, our art teacher. Bravo. One thought that's been rolling around in my head over the last several weeks has been the idea of strengthening our relationship with the Select Board and with the Finance Committee. Communication and collaboration beyond that which we have during budget season can only bring more understanding and trust. I'm hoping to have some time to discuss this with the rest of the school committee in an upcoming meeting. So to that end, and this was going to be a segue, I was then going to introduce Ryan Curley, because I did not look to see where he was placed on the agenda. But I will just end with thanking you all for being here tonight. And Chivana is not on yet, I guess, so we will move on, I guess. And we can start with reports and collaborations, and if she's able to come back on, Brooke?
We both, we still have.
Oh, you have yours.
Yeah. The superintendent's report. So if we could do the principal's report first, that would be awesome.
Sorry. Did it again.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you so much for that, those kind words. I will certainly share that with the staff, and we'll be very grateful for your acknowledgement and the kind words again that you had to say, so thank you. And in the principal's report, I know that he is on this meeting tonight, and Mr. Lee Miller, after 36 years of committed service teaching students at Wellfleet Elementary School, with heavy heart, we will be saying so long to him as he will be retiring at the end of this school year. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I know that he has mixed emotions. It's very emotional when you're making that decision whether or not to retire. And he's really looking forward to what life has to offer beyond teaching. So we're hoping we can twist his arm a little bit. Maybe he'll come back as a substitute, but I'm not quite sure if he will commit to such. And we did receive a resignation from our substantially separate special education. substantially separate special education teacher. She has decided to go back into general education, so she is leaving us and will be teaching grade one at Barnstable, West Barnstable in the fall. So that is Lenore Chiefo, and she did an outstanding job this year with our substantially separate kiddos. And we hate to see her go, but she's excited for the next chapter in her life, and of course, we wish her well. And the other thing that I just wanted to follow up on is our after-school enrichment program. So we are now offering three courses to finish out the school year. And those course offerings include uh, the peace garden. So Claudia Co. Croson, our school nurse, will continue with that, with our pollinators and um, adding to the garden that we currently have. And uh, Mrs. Gallagher, our art teacher, is going to be offering an art class for students too. Both of those programs will be welcoming kiddos from grades K to five. And we have a new um, ed assistant who is in our building, actually works for Eastham Elementary, but she is working in our building with one of our, one of the Eastham students. And she is offering cricket to our grade five students. So she'll be welcoming twelve grade five students if they would like to learn cricket. She uh, got a pulse from grade five that some of them already knew it and wanted to learn more and would like, like to put a team together. So that will be happening, and that will happen from May sixteenth through June twenty-third. So those are my updates.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mary Beth? Laura?
Yeah, I just, I was wondering, I, about the report, the third grade uh, teacher. Is she, the resignation, is that, was she, is she gone as of, like, now, or is that for now?
That's, that's a very good question. Now, she's finishing out the school year as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause, sorry, can I, so, but the fourth grade hire, Mrs. Wood, I believe?
Ms. Wood.
Yeah, Ms., yeah, is that?
So she will be going to grade four.
Okay. Okay, can-
The grade three has two sessions. So Ms. Wood was hired because Ms. uh, Dee Simone is not going to move to grade four to be, to have been with Mr. Miller. So it was replacing her. So now we're in the process of, um, not that we can replace him, but replacing Mr. Miller's position.
Okay. Can I ask another question on that?
Absolutely.
So the plan is still to have two fourth grades?
Correct.
Okay. And everyone, every other grade will be one class?
Correct.
It's, okay, okay.
Joan?
Do either of the two teachers, not the retired teacher, but the other two, um, have to do with housing?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Some good filter, Joan.
And housing has been an issue with newer teachers in the past.
And Jill?
Mary Beth, do you foresee in the future, the after-school enrollment, I mean, the after-school enrichment program uh, with Cory checks and other um, security things? Uh, do you foresee that people from the community would be able to eventually uh, be instructors for the after-school uh, enrichment program? I, there was a time people from the community could. You know, I was one of the people who would teach this natural science class or cooperative games. Uh, and then I know that there was some concerns about that. So again, do you foresee in the future that could be a possibility again?
Absolutely. We don't, we considered it for this round, but going through all of that security check takes so much time that we were at the crunch. We actually wanted to start it this week, and I was struggling trying to find somebody to be the coordinator for the program. And yes, we, we've always had it open to the community, to parents, whoever would like to come in. And that, again, is where we want to get back to normal and to have those opportunities again. Yes.
Great question.
Thank you.
And I think, thank you very much. No other questions. Superintendent Clinchy?
Great, thank you very much. I have my report, and then I have a couple of additional items, and I apologize for that, that are not listed here. So I have four additional things, and I'm gonna just make a couple of quick comments on. The first is just to acknowledge the staff again. Last week was Staff Appreciation Week, and uh, we just want to take this opportunity to extend a deep note of thanks and gratitude to all of our Knott's staff for their continued efforts to support our district the best that it can be, and to nurture, to encourage, to teach, and to support each and every student. We're a strong district due directly to the staff's efforts, their hard work, and their compassion. These have been difficult years as we've navigated a pandemic, and the efforts that they have taken to take care of our children and communities, be flexible, be innovative, and continue to always put forth that extra has not gone unnoticed. And so we just want to express again, um, a huge thank you and note of gratitude to everyone. Um, I know that we sent, um, Central Office actually sent a bouquet of flowers to every school um, that said from Central, that's thanking them for everything they did. But somehow flowers just doesn't seem like enough, but even the words "thank you" sometimes don't seem like enough either. But we have amazing staff in Knott's Public Schools, and I'm just so proud to be part of this district. So that's number one. Number two, just a, a bit of a quick um, update on administrative changes. Uh, Patrick Clark, you know, is going to be our new principal at Knott's Regional High School, and he's starting that transition process, working with Dr. Chris L. Salsar. Um, the hiring teams um, interviewed for assistant principals. Uh, we have two positions there that we are filling because obviously Patrick Clark uh, was an assistant principal, moving to the principal position. And then Sean Fleming actually accepted a different job within the regional high school. So that left us with two positions. Um, we're excited for Sean too. He's excited about the new work that he's about to undertake, uh, and he's really looking forward to that. And so the hiring process um, was thorough, it was diligent. And then Dr. Miller and I met with the candidates uh, the other day, the finalists uh, that were there, and we sent contracts out today. So I'm not prepared until those contracts are signed to release uh, any additional information, but we are very excited. Uh, both of these individuals are known on the Cape uh, in the education circles, so I don't think that they'll be surprise names to, to those uh, who've been on the Cape for years. The other uh, position it within the region is Neil Mylan, uh, who was our assistant principal at Knott's Regional Middle School. He tendered his paperwork for retirement, and so we are now in the process of um, looking to fill that position. He is gonna stay on until uh, probably the first week of November, and, and his sole focus is gonna be to help get our new grade sixes um, acclimated at the middle school. And uh, so we're looking forward to his work in that area, and he'll work with Jean Baskin uh, with the MTSS component and PBIS as they start to uh, get a good foundation with that piece too, with our grade sixes. Um, the other position i- is at the Eddie School. Uh, we did a one-year trial this, in this current year, uh, with Allison Joy, who was just an amazing add for us as the assistant principal, and Keith Golly served as a principal to both of the Brewster Schools. Um, we took some, some time to have some serious reflection and say, is this the best that we feel most comfortable with for the two schools? And ultimately, after a lot of discussion, a lot of difficult discussion, we decided that we would return to the two-principal model. And so you'll see that there's a posting out right now for the principal position at Eddie School. Um, our, uh, special thanks to Allison and Keith for doing the tag teaming effort this year. It was a lot. It was a heavy load for them. So thanks to them. The third piece that I've got here is kind of a, just a gentle reminder, and I think in part it's because it's budget season as we're uh, wrapping up. And so I just wanted to kind of review a couple of things here. So uh, this is probably more for the community rather than just our, you know, our committee members, because I know that you all know this, but a couple of times a year, I think it's just a good idea just to review a, a couple of key things. Um, and especially when it comes to its linkage to budget. So within MGL, within Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven, the primary rules of the school committee are clearly defined. And I've attached that document with this report. School committee members are responsible to oversee basically three things. Your selection and determination of the superintendent, you've just gone through that process, to review and approve budgets for the schools consistent um, with the district needs and, and what has been laid out and supported with administration, and to establish goals and policies for the schools that are consistent with the requirements of the law and the statewide goals and standards established by the Massachusetts State Board of Education. And of course, they, they work with, with DESI, so it's kind of seen as a, not really top-down, but you've, you've got some good guidance uh, from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, some good guidance from the state, and then good guidance from DESE and the State Board of Education. And school committees have to look at all of that. And then in that, um, I've also included a companion doc, document from Mass General Law, which is Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen-B, which clearly outlines the process expected for a regional school district budget. The region budget components tend to be more complex than the single municipalities. So I don't want to say that the single municipalities are easier, but they're not as complex as the region. The region has additional things that come into play. And uh, you know, whether it's the E and D uh, the account that they run, or they're able to set up different um, fund, uh, fund um, lines that other, other folks can't. There's just a little bit more latitude with the region. Um, it doesn't mean the accountability is any less, or the accountability in some ways is every bit as strong as municipalities, and in fact, in some ways more. And one of the things that many regional school districts do is set up a budget and warrant committee. And that budget and warrant committee basically makes a move, and they start around December, but certainly they're strong through January, February, March. And they've got, they, they have regular meetings with Giovanna and her team. Um, they kind of know that budget inside out, and they're there to ask the hard questions. All of those meetings are all public, so anybody can come to them at any point in time. If you want to watch how the regional budget is built, those are the meetings to really attend. Um, so uh, I, I wanted to put that out there as well. Our school committee members take the role of budget oversight seriously and toggle supporting the schools and their individual needs to ensure solid, equitable educational experiences for all children within NPS with their fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers. And this can be, this can be a challenging role, and our committees and our administrative offices did a great job this year. And as we wrap up this budget season, I want to extend a note of thanks to everyone who helped to support the building of all of our Knott's budgets. So with that said, I think sometimes, you know, you'll, you'll hear in the back corners, you know, well, um, the Board of Selectmen might say, well, you know, it's our role, it's, you know, and, and we look after the taxpayers. And well, actually, a school committee's role is that too. They too look out for the goodness of the taxpayers, and their job is a, is a little bit harder cause their, their job is also, and I'm not trying to be biased towards school committee members, but your job is a little harder because you're doing the budget and you're toggling it with what's in the best interest for your school, for your district, in our case, for your region as well. So i- i- your role is a much more complex role in some ways. And I think the other thing I just want to point out is on the second page of the uh, budgets or um, in, in terms of the region, I just want to point out the second, kind of, it was also, really the first full paragraph. And I think that this is just an important thing, and I want to put this out there, that the regional school district treasurer shall provide a copy of the adopted budget, and that's a key term right there. The adopted budget to the chairman of the boards of selectmen, chairman of the finance committees, mayors, presidents of the city councils, and treasurers of the several municipalities. So again, I just want to stress that the building of the budget and the reviewing of the budget is really school committee's domain. And uh, in, in the case of the region, um, they do it as well, and they will take the adopt, their adopted budget thereafter out to the municipalities. And I think that they got some, a, a bit of pushback this year because, you know, committees wondered, well, should they come to us first? Well, the answer is no, they should take that adopted budget out after. So that's just a, just a bit of clarity on that, in case there were any questions. I'm happy to take some questions in a minute. On a couple of other things, um, just a quick comment on housing. I would want you to know that we certainly recognize, I, I know that you're thinking specifically, specifically right now about Wellfleet, and I'm so excited about what Ryan presented tonight. I think that that's got a lot of really good possibilities. And I, I think it, I think it will be wonderful wa- for Wellfleet. I think it's very interesting that they've got this window of opportunity right now, that six years, because that will give time to be thoughtful, to go through the process and not feel rushed and, and do it right. So I'm so excited for that. Housing um, is not a problem, as we all know, just within Wellfleet, we see it right across the, right across the district. And I think I've mentioned this before, but I mean, even this year, we had people start and, and leave within a couple of weeks and said, I just can't afford to live here. That happened in a number of schools across our district this year. So housing is problematic. It, it, it just absolutely is. Um, in the apartment building that I live in, I thought, I'm in a small apart, one bedroom. I thought, oh, it would be nice to go to a two-bedroom. It starts at four thousand sixty-eight, I think, per month.
Amazing.
It's just ridic, it's just ridiculous, right? And so of course, I can't, I, I can't afford that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention just about COVID, we'll have a memo that'll go out probably tomorrow or the day after uh, with just a bit of a reflection and a reminder that we might want to think about making sure that we're staying strict with our mitigation director, mitigation strategies where it makes sense. And you know, I think that um, although we're not looking at masking, mandating masks right now, uh, I think, I think parents might want to start thinking about putting those masks back on. Um, and certainly, like, we can't do anything that happens outside of school. We all acknowledge that. But we had a tough week last week, and we had, you know, eighty, I believe eighty-one cases across the school district last week alone, and I think that was our second highest all year. And on Monday, we had thirty-six brand-new cases, just on Monday alone of this week. So I, I think that people are turning a bit of a blind eye, and I want to make sure that we remember that it's still here, it's still among us. Uh, two other final notes. Um, I want to thank uh, Orleans and Eastham. Uh, both annual town meetings adopted both of our budgets, and we are so grateful, and we thank those communities uh, for their support. And the last thing, just a special thanks to Wellfleet Elementary School staff. I had the great pleasure of spending some time with them the other day, and I loved every minute of it. Um, it gave me an opportunity to, to hear from them. We talked about the challenges of this year, some challenges we looked forward, uh, and uh, just appreciated the time spent with them, so special thanks. Any questions? Whoops, Bartha, you're muted.
Liberty?
Yeah, thank you, Brooke. I have a question. Just when you were talking about um, COVID, there was a lot of information, but specifically when you were talking about COVID and um, parents thinking about masking again. And I know, you know, I'm not sure if it was last year, we were getting like parent square texts, oh, this is the case numbers. And I'm wondering if there's any thought again to giving that information regularly to parents? Cause I think parents, if, you know, if we knew, okay, it's this much in the middle school, it's this much in the high school, at least maybe weekly. I know it was getting crazy every day and nobody was reading them, but if it was weekly, I wonder if that might help parents make more informed decisions.
So, so thank you. I, I think the uh, thing that we're looking at doing too is just doing another link back to our, our main page, because our website still is tracking it. Um, but to be honest with you, and I, I know that you all know this as well as we do, e- the cases that we're reporting are only the cases that we absolutely know about. And so I, I think that we would, it would be foolhardy for us to think that we are tracking all cases because we can't, we just can't. And especially now with home tests and that kind of thing, we're just, we, we just can't. So I would say that whatever number you're seeing there is an under, um, an undercount. So, but yes, do, do look at that, and we will be linking that to the memo that goes out this week.
Thank you. Laura?
I, I would say, I mean, I know uh, Claudia and, and Mary Beth, I'm sure is a part of it. For Wellfleet, we are getting the numbers, and I appreciate it very much. The last parent square we got was a recommendation to have the kids mask if they have not had COVID in nine days. And I, I appreciate that so much, and it was exact numbers that, that we have.
Right.
Um, and it was great. So Wellfleet itself is doing it, and I really appreciate it. Um, I mean, I know they're not gonna be mandated, but it gives parents definitely, I, I know my kid said more kids were masked the day after that email came out, and so uh, that was great.
It was interesting last night in Orleans, because Orleans had their town meeting last night. And they sent a memo out, I think midday, that said that they were looking to hope that most people would mask at the Orleans meeting. And it was packed. The that gymnasium at the middle school was absolutely packed. It was literally standing room only, so there were a lot of people in there. I would say eighty, eighty, ninety percent of the people in that room were masked. And they were handing them out as people were walking in. So that felt comfort, as comfortable as it can feel right now. I guess my only thing is that I think we're starting to see it more and more, even as I'm walking in and out of businesses, grocery stores, that kind of thing. I'm seeing more masking happening again.
Thank you.
Any other? Oh, sorry. No, I was just gonna say, yeah, mine are in middle school and high school, so we haven't gotten that information. But like, if that would translate to the middle school and high school, the way they are in Wellfleet, I think would be helpful. You know, you might, you might get more masking at that level, too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Giovanna here, so we can stay right on track.
Thank you. Let's go directly to page nine of the report. The prior month balance was ninety five thousand two hundred and fifty four dollars. We put back into the budget this month eleven thousand five hundred and five dollars, leaving a balance of a hundred and six thousand seven hundred and fifty nine dollars. I'm going to identify those budget line items that we spent or encumbered a thousand dollars or more since last month's recording. Starting on page two at the top of the page, four zero six seven, Special Education Contracted Services Medical Therapeutic. We spent or encumbered two thousand dollars since last month's recording, and that's all driven by student need. Moving on to page six at the bottom of the page, line four zero six zero Fuel Oil, we put back into the budget fourteen thousand dollars since last month's recording. Abby went through and looked at the consumption and projected out for the remainder of the year. Therefore, we were able to put money back into the budget. Moving on to page seven at the top of the page, line four zero six two Electricity, Abby did the same methodology here, looked at what we spent and projected for the remaining couple of months of the school year. We were able to put back five thousand dollars into the budget. Moving on to page eight at the top, four zero five six Contracted Services Equipment. We spent or encumbered ninety four hundred and twelve dollars since last month's recording. And this is reflective of repairs to various equipment, H factory pairs, circular pumps, gauges, new shaft couplings for pumps and bleacher inspection. The next line item on that same page, four zero five eight Contracted Services Extraordinary Maintenance. We spent or encumbered seventy two hundred and eighty nine dollars, and those costs incurred were based on need. We had some emergency repairs to the pneumatic system. We had a leaking valve compressor, new motor couplings and end bearing to the cafeteria unit, as well as repairs to the bleachers. And finally, on page nine, at the middle of the page, line four zero nine eight Special Education Tuition Collaborative. We were able to put back into the budget twelve thousand three hundred and seventy one dollars after making adjustments to the the cost to the collaborative. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Giovanna. And now I guess we can go on to reports. And Jill, you're up with the collaborative.
Yes, there was a meeting Wednesday, April thirteenth. There's a meeting tomorrow. Strategic planning, the, I've been trying to get more information from Paul, and he really has been quite busy. And he hasn't gotten back to me, so I'm hoping I'll get more information tomorrow about strategic planning. But our last meeting, it was brought up that the collaborative is overdue to do their strategic planning. I took place, I I took part in strategic planning a long time ago with the collaborative. It's going to be a wonderful, worthy happening. As we all know, and as mentioned, one of the big ones will be regional housing, you know, since all the different members of the collaborative deal with many of the same issues. The strategic planning will be looking at that among many other things. What I have asked Paul, which I hope to get more information tomorrow, is for anyone who serves on the Strategic Planning Committee coming up, what is the timeline? I I don't know any of this information yet. When are the meetings going to be? Does he visualize it's going to be Zoom, or is it going to be in person? As it, there will be representation from all kinds of stakeholders. Where we're involved as far as school committees is ideally the collaborative strategic planning committee should have, will have, hopefully have a representative from each school committee. It does not at all have to be the person who is your representative on the collaborative. I, quite frankly, am overwhelmed. On I I work off Cape half the week, sometimes the whole week, you know, I still do the school accreditation work. You know, staying at hotels and motels away from home. And personally, there's been a very difficult development. I hope I don't start to cry on this meeting. But I've had a little preemie grandson with a lot of medical issues who's been in an ICU for about three weeks now. For a while, it looked like he wasn't going to make it. He's been on breathing support. He's been on a gastric tube. There's been a little bit of progress. We're we're very cautious as far as getting excited about little steps. There was a brain M R I that showed he had a hematoma, but but it's not bleeding anymore. It I've I've been very overwhelmed. I've had sometimes the attention span of a flea. It's been very hard. When the baby comes home, and also my son's got a different job. He got accepted teaching geology. He's Chair of a department right now at a college. They're moving. Their house gets for sale in another week. They're moving to another state. Where I'm going with this is I don't know when I'm leaving the Cape, but I'm going to be leaving the Cape. I'm not moving myself, but I might be moving with them, helping them to move. But it's feasible that I'm, once the baby comes home, that I'll be gone at least a month, maybe more, helping them out with the move, with the baby, with the three year old they already have. So between my work and for every visit, site visit I do off Cape, I have two days at home to prepare for it. I wish I could take more on, but I can't. So again, the representative for the Strategic Plan Committee, it's not starting for a while. But again, I need more information to help people make up their minds about, is that something they want to serve on it? On it. So tomorrow I'll have more answers as far as will they be Zoom? Will they be in person? Will the meetings? Yeah, approximately how long and a timeline. Now, on the collaborative, we have late afternoon meetings as well, because most of us are working. So I figure that it should be likely will be sensitive to those who are working more traditional jobs. So again, our meetings for the collaborative are late afternoon. So it's something for people to think about. I can't do it. I I did it in the past, but I can't do it now. So again, anybody from the school committee can be a representative, but I'm just kind of curious. Anybody tempted by this?
These are in-person meetings, right?
No, don't know yet. We'll find out.
We'll find out.
They could be in person or it could be Zoom. And again, it tackles regional issues, you know, such as housing, such as what the pandemic did socially and emotionally, you know, it it will be a breadth of diverse topics. Oh, social equity. Yeah.
I mean, you know, I'm sorry to hear all that, Jill, about your family, first of all, and I, you know, I I could be interested. I feel like it just comes down to what the schedule is like for it. And so, you know, if if, I mean, you know, if you guys need me to step in and take it, I can. It just really depends on the work, workday schedule.
Sure. And I come to you all with like zip information as far as timeline and all that. But hopefully, I will. I, and again, I I don't think it would violate open meeting laws, would it, if I send it just information from the meeting tomorrow night? Instead of waiting a whole month of letting people know about this? Just so people could have more information? It's information, it's not a discussion. So I think it would be okay with that sort of frame if I just send information to people. And maybe it would not be, and also if people would get in touch with either me or Martha, maybe that's the way to go.
So certainly sending the information out, like that kind of infinite information doesn't violate violate open meeting law, so you're fine to do that. And then they can even discuss it at next time unless there's a meeting in between, and somebody can go to that meeting if they'd like, and then come back and bring it forward, and they can have discussion thereafter. But sending the actual information that you're looking at sending for dates and times and the types of stuff that you're, you're fine.
Good. That's what I figured, but I'm glad I'm checking in. All right. So I'll send information to help people make decisions tomorrow evening. So going on with what happened at the meeting on April thirteenth, and there's a meeting tomorrow. We went over the fiscal year twenty twenty three spending plan. We voted on the school calendar. Unfortunately, the South Yarmouth Place that was hopefully going to be ready for the collaborative in September, there's been supply chain issues. So the opening of the building right now is going to be December first, you know, with after all the renovations and whatnot. Sandwich did give their permission for a longer stay for the school, for the programs. Because the programs are going to be further into the Cape. You know, instead of Sandwich, eventually South Yarmouth, that there was a change in starting time, which is actually going to probably be a win-win situation. But a number of teachers who are driving from off Cape before going to Sandwich, they still very much are Melk Road and want to stay with the collaborative, but it's going to work better for them to have a later travel time, so that got changed with some of the programs. The playground, there's been some fundraising for the playground. There's right now no playground. There's a teacher who is also a musician, and he facilitated a music bingo evening where they raised two thousand dollars at a local place, which is pretty darn commendable. Beth Deck, who's been the Administrative Assistant to Paul and our Secretary for a very, very long time. Sadly, she's going to be leaving, but she's put in a lot of years with the collaborative, so there might be a reorganization to replace Beth Deck, but that will be one big change. There is somebody who is an administrative intern that might work out. That's to be announced. There's still a lot of partnerships with Bridgewater State University. The Bridgewater State University has been partnership partnering with the educational, with the collaborative for a long time. And right now, what they're doing, one of the many things is there's a second cohort that's happening or about to happen. The acronym is COFIE, the Collaborative Framework for Educational Evaluation. COFIE, and it exists for new administration, new administrators and department heads. And anybody who's responsible for supervising, observing and or evaluating staff. So that's been highly successful. I know that Betsy Pontius took advantage of that, and she had nothing but praise about the COFIE collaboration. All Cape service date has been established, October seventh, I believe. Nine educators from Falmouth, Sandwich, Mashpee, Barnstable, D Y, Naussit, Nantucket have been recruited to serve as content coordinators in the fields of world language, nursing, art, phys ed, health, English, language education, music, early childhood education, counseling, and library media. Always, it's an outstanding professional development day, especially for people who are in these specializations where they get to meet up with others across the Cape and off Cape also, who are in these various specializations. It's a wonderful thing. And the A S L P program that is for middle schoolers, it's coming along, although with rising COVID rates and everything, it could change. But right now, it looks like it's a nine resident, nine night residential program. Eleven days, two hundred and thirteen students have been accepted. Oh, gosh, there's just so much more. But one very alarming thing I learned when we were talking about spending plans and budgets is health insurance is twenty five percent higher on the Cape than off the Cape for the same same policies. It just is ridiculous. Maybe that's another thing that might be on the strategic meeting collaborative committee. All right. Well, that's good enough for tonight. There'll be more to share from tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Jill, and thank you for agreeing or coming up with the idea to send send that information out to us. Maybe you want to wait till the next day rather than doing it tomorrow night, just in terms of your rest. We won't see it tomorrow night anyway.
Right? There are long meetings, nineteen different districts, sending these meetings. Not everybody attends them.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And Liberty, I know you have things to say to today.
Yep, super briefly, we didn't have a P T A meeting, so I'm not sure when that's going to be, but I did talk to Charity about how we can support the teacher appreciation dinner that they're doing on June third. And she said they're doing, I know, Jill, you had said something about bouquets, so I mentioned flowers, something like that, and she said they're going to do daisies in mason jars, so we could get them daisies, or she had suggested if we wanted to chip in and do like a gift card to Michael, she said, or they've got it. So if we want to do something, we can do like a gift card to Michael's. I know I didn't get a chance to put this on the agenda because it was just last night that I heard of this. But what I'm thinking is that, and I think this would be okay if we decided to do something like that, and anybody just wanted to like email me that they want to chip in for a Michael's gift card or something like that, we could do it that way. Or they're all set. They've they've got the food and all of that together, so it's optional.
So any questions or comments?
I'm just, how would Michael's gift card?
Oh, she was saying for decorations, so they would get like a gift card to like Michael's, or I guess a party store. She named another one that I had not heard of. That's why I said Michael's.
I like that idea. If it would help the P T A, if it's something they really need. There's a piece of me as a former teacher who would rather figure out how to do something directly directly to the staff, to the teachers and staff.
I agree. Yeah.
And it might be something we can do at the end of the year, you know, near nearer to the end of the year, like you know, food in the in the lunchroom, you know, things that they wouldn't normally get. I'm thinking of chocolate and ice cream for some reason, but. I don't, I don't know what people think. Jill?
Yeah, I like that idea to have it personal and from us, that clearly from us, and you know, maybe some nibbles or, you know, some special treat in the teacher room. Also, if we could write a note that's personal. I'm not sure the logistics of how we could do that unless, hey, I'd be open. I could do this one because there's no time. Oh, wait a minute, I better not. I could be in California. I don't know. Never mind. But a, a pretty note card, and maybe because of COVID and logistics, maybe somebody would be willing to get a pretty note card, and we can suggest things for them to write. You know, but something personal from the school committee. It's like, you know, I could be, I'm already packed. I could be leaving for California in three days, or it could be three weeks. I've got to like, be careful of what I say and do, because I was going to say, I've got really pretty note cards. To get it to somebody, whatever.
I'm wondering if if either the ice cream shop or what's the other one? Gelato Joy, somebody like that could deliver ice cream to the teacher's room someday. I really wish the teachers weren't listening to this because
Oh, gosh.
It'd be a surprise. You can't tell you guys. We know you're there. What could we, is there something like that that we could do? I don't know.
I, I know that the thing that the teachers in my school used to enjoy would be bagels and cream cheese and coffee for breakfast, and it can be left in the staff, it says staff lounge. And people can have it for an early lunch or for breakfast, and we put a nice note card there. And then we don't have to worry about a freezer space or anything like that.
That's a great idea.
There's a, a new bagel place that just opened, the Bagel Hound. If you guys haven't been there, it's very good.
Yeah, it's very good. Salty market, salty market.
Would you tell me the name of it, Liberty, and I will call them. And if they can't do it, maybe.
Your mama. But the one that just opened up in Wellfleet is called Bagel Hound.
Bagel Hound, yeah.
Okay. Why don't I find out about that? I can let you know because we're not voting.
Mary Beth, what's the number of staff at the school?
Staff and teachers, faculty, teachers.
For all staff, thirty-eight.
And you're counting office staff?
Um, the bagels are pricey. There's something like two dollars and at least two fifty apiece, maybe two seventy-five.
Well, maybe they'll help us out with that.
Right. Maybe they'd give us a group, a group discount or something.
You know, I bet they would, because we were actually there on a Monday, and they close on Tuesday, Wednesday, and so they were just getting rid, rid of a bunch of, they gave us like a bunch of bagels and cream cheese. So they probably would be open to that.
That would be good marketing for them too, quite seriously. It would be a win-win situation if they did do some little discount or, because truly it would be a good. So they could have promotional stuff too, that they could leave, you know.
You know, the other thing is, here's my question, Brooke. Again, I can give out information. The other piece is to let people know how much it's going to cost. And another piece would be if it seems like they're not going, you know, if it's, it's ridiculous, ridiculously prohibitive. Another place to check out would be PB Balanjerie, because in the past, they have been incredibly generous to people as well. So I, I'm happy to call them both and, and can I let people know? And then can they tell me it's not really that kind of a vote? Okay.
Yeah, for this kind of thing, this, this is not decision-making that's good. This, this is totally separate from the type of decision-making that you would normally make.
Okay.
To the schools.
I just had an idea too, another win-win idea. I believe they're closed on Tuesdays. So Monday afternoons, my guess is they would kind of be selling or wanting to push what they have left over. You know what I'm saying? Not, not quite day old, but stuff would still be good, you know. So if, if pickup is made Monday before they close, I have a feeling that could be advantageous too, you know. So Tuesday morning, teachers would have something still quite fresh. But they probably would not still have it on the shelves for Wednesday.
Okay, I will, I'll, I'll check that out for sure. Yes, I remember leaving there with bags of bread and things on a Sunday night because they were closed Monday and Tuesday. You know.
My daughter works there on Sundays and comes back with stuff, and it's getting very dangerous for us here.
You know where I live, right?
Yes, that's a great idea.
Okay, so I will, I will, I will carry that out. And thank you, Liberty. Behavioral Health Task Force.
We're meeting next week. We haven't met.
Okay. And I think the strategic planning steering committee was talking about meeting in May. Robin might know about that.
Yes, we're gonna.
Were we going to meet again?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we are going to meet someday soon. Great, thank you. Policies subcommittee met last Tuesday, I believe. And we have decided, we, we have at least one policy ready, maybe two for a first reading, and since most of the school committees were doing reorgs in May, we decided to put those policies on the agenda for our June meetings. And the first one I've already talked to you about, it was the sexual harassment piece. And the other one that we went over the other day very briefly was students and educational surveys and research and what to do about that. So at least one of those will be ready for all of us next month to do a first reading. Okay, and and we have school council report.
We have that next week.
Okay, and future agenda items. And I already have a bunch of them. I have some leftover from last month. But we definitely want to talk about the strategic planning for the collabor, collaborative. And I think another thing we need to talk about is going forward, whether we want, if we can continue meeting on Zoom, do we want to continue that? Or do we want to start thinking about meeting face to face? It may be that we will have no choice. I know that our current, our current agreement ends, I believe, on July, sometime in July, I think it's July fifteenth. So that's, might be moot, but if we, that's something else that we probably should be talking about. And I would love to talk at some point about having perhaps a representative from the finance committee and or the select board who would come to meetings, maybe not every single month, but a few times a year, besides during our budget season. I know that we did have, have a member of the finance committee come a few times in his early tenure. He was, he is our liaison, but that sort of hasn't happened very much. And we can talk about the pros and cons of that too. I mean, it may not be a good idea, but there we go. So the only other thing, if you do have other things you'd like to talk about, please, please, please let us know. You know how to find us. And you can certainly let Arlen or Brooke or me know, and we'll put it down. And finally, the approval of the meeting minutes for last month.
Jill Plutn, I'm similar.
A second.
Those in favor? Thank you. And I think that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, Jill and Liberty, was that a second?
Second.
Okay. Good, good, good. Thank you all so much, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
And thank you.